Good evening, everybody. This is the Halifax Board of Selectmen Meeting of Tuesday, July 24, 2018. We are being taped by Area 58, which can be seen on YouTube or Channel 15 on your local station. We will begin the meeting with the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, does anybody want to edit the agenda at all?
I have nothing to change.
No, I'm good.
Okay, so I'm gonna just actually take something out of order because we have some guests here. We have Jasmine Rosetti, who wants to do a fundraiser for our effort to rebuild Hops. So they want to talk to us about having a yard sale on August 12. August 12, which is a...
It's a Sunday.
It's a Sunday. Between what hours?
So we're gonna try and do 8 to 10:30.
8 to 10:30. That's pretty early.
That's a short span.
A little early.
I mean, I want to hear what you guys have to say if you think it's too...
Well, on a Sunday, everybody, most people are in church and going and changing.
Stopping for their morning coffee.
Stopping for their morning coffee, 8 o'clock in the morning, you know, at 10:30. So you're talking about really, maybe 10 to 10:30 is when people start showing.
I'm thinking maybe 10 to noon. If you only want to keep it as a two-hour window, I'm thinking 10 to noon, only because if you want to get as many people to buy things. That I think, I agree with Troy, that Sunday mornings, you either see people going to church, or you have people just sort of, that's the one morning that some people can kind of just lazy around a bit.
Yeah. Okay.
The nice thing is that you're gonna have a lot of exposure on 106, so people are gonna see you. So that's a really great thing. So if that's too late, like, we don't want to make you inconvenient. Are you sure?
Oh, no. The time of day doesn't matter. I just, I honestly didn't even think about the church aspect of it. I just...
Yeah, if it was the Saturday, you got everybody going by in the cars and everything else. On Sunday, most people are, you know, at least in this area where you're gonna be. And when the church lets out around, what, 10, 11 o'clock?
Depends on the mass, yeah.
Depends on the mass. So you got a crowd coming through, so...
Well, plus, you can kind of play it by year, too. I mean, if it's getting to be noon time and you're actually busy, I mean, you're hanging there a little longer.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, we applaud your efforts to want to help with, you know, the rebuilding of Hops, and, you know, we really appreciate all the work that you're gonna put into it.
I love to swing, so, yeah.
So we just have a, the major question is, when we have people who have yard sales, when they come, we want it to look exactly the same when you leave.
Yes.
Meaning, we don't want trash lying around, and we don't want things that aren't sold laying around, so we want to make sure that you know that whatever you bring needs to be taken away that same day.
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions?
I'm good. Thank you for your effort.
Yeah, no, it's really very generous of you to spend the time and effort to be able to help rebuild Hops. And now, when you look at it, you'll have, that you'll know that you'll have a part in all that. So that's really very nice, yeah.
Yeah, back in the olden days, I was one of the first people to work the first Hops. I was on that committee.
Oh, really?
Yeah, back in the olden days.
Do you want us to give you a bigger window of time? Not that you have to do it the whole time, but just in case, as Tom alluded to, that you get busy and then it's past noon. Like, we could give you, like, from, so you can set up, like, yeah, like, 9:30 to 1:00? That way, you have plenty of time to clean up, or, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you.
So what's it gonna be? It's gonna be 9:30 to 1:00.
9:30 to 1:00?
But you're gonna advertise it really from 12 to, I mean, from 10 to 12. Whatever you want to do for the time, but that just gives you a little flexibility. Because you may have people showing up as you're setting up.
Yeah, well, that's the whole thing.
Yeah, that's usually, they like to try to grab...
Yeah.
The best stuff.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So do you have a plenty of help, or is it just you guys?
Um, well, when we went to the Hops meeting last night, I kind of said, you know, if anyone wants to help out, it's not, we don't really need people to help out. I mean, I have my family, we have friends that are gonna help out, but I kind of, like, made it open if any of them wanted to help out. A few of them are on vacation, but I think that one or two of them said that they were gonna try and help out, too.
Oh, awesome. All right, perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, so do I have a motion that we approve the use of the town green for the yard sale to benefit Hops on Sunday, August 12, from 9:30 to 1:00?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again for coming in.
Thank you, ladies.
And thank you again, really. We're so, so honored that you would pick us to help.
It's nice that young people like yourself are getting involved in the community itself because it benefits you. You're the future of the town, you know? These little folks aren't gonna be around very long.
And now that you have your names, you will be contacted for all kinds of openings, all kinds of committees.
Yeah, we've got your name on the list now. You will be volunteering.
Thank you. You don't have to say, you can, yeah, but thank you again for coming.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Okay, so Tom, do you want to take it away? We have the selectmen minutes from regular session from May 8, 2019. I don't know if anybody has been, had a chance to review them.
I am reviewed.
So would you like to make a motion?
Will we accept the meeting minutes for regular session, May 8, 2018?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we're done.
Yep, you're, now you're, there you go, you're adult Tom.
Yay. I move to affirm approval of the following warrants, commitments, and line item transfers. FY 2018 vendor warrant, number 123, for $28,857.28. Vendor warrant number 124, for $26,191.40. Vendor warrant number 6, for $582,208.76. Ambulance commitment 7A, for $20,853. Ambulance commitment 7B, for $17,396. From veterans' benefits to veterans' expense, one, oh, nope, it's only $17.26. Kind of threw me there, it was small. From accountant's expense to accountant, team, clerical, $4.40.
She didn't budget properly.
You'd be infrugal there out here, I'm telling you.
She's that Sandy Nolan.
She's moonbeast.
From fire wages to town building wages, $420.
Second.
All those in favor? We were just open with Annie, she's so meticulous.
I move to approve the following warrants. Fiscal 2019 payroll warrant, number 7, for $226,239.87. Vendor warrant number 8, for $55,427.61. And withholding warrant for $77,093.65.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on. I move to approve Pamela's selectmen bills dated July 24, 2018. Okay. Pamela managed to get herself on a warrant, Pamela McSherry, for $13.41. Sorry.
Oh, well, I guess it's mileage. I guess it's mileage.
Miles. It didn't say mileage.
Why would it put mileage? I'm surprised.
Oh, it said 26 miles. Okay, that qualifies.
Oh, Charlie.
MMMA.
Rush?
Annual dues, $143.15.
I was just about to...
PMI, annual licensing fee for any music we use, anytime, anywhere, $349.
Yeah.
MMA, $40 for a monthly meeting. Another one for MMA, for $1,033. Was it a different meeting?
Different. What was that meeting about?
Those are our memberships.
This is MMA, not M-MMA.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's our annual membership.
And that's it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, Charlie, you have perfect timing.
Good.
Because you're on. You have five minutes.
Unrested vehicles, 65 Colby Drive. I'll be sending another certified letter unless the board tells me otherwise, to 65 Colby Drive of the unrested vehicles. There, same for 24 Cherry Street. And then, those fines would start on August 15. I'll see the board, obviously, on the 14th, and give them a report. And if the violations are corrected, then no fines are gonna be necessary, but if they aren't, then fines would start at that point. Terry Bryan Cook has been in touch with the board before about the confusion of ownership on the number of small parcels around Crystal Lake. He wrote to the board again, recommending the board refer everything to Town Council. I did get a note from another member of the family who mentioned that Mr. Bryan Cook is not representing all the members of the family.
Oh, okay.
In these issues of ownership.
Okay, interesting.
Not that there's any action the board takes about that, but just so the board's aware that there seems to be, it's a multi-sided issue. I'm gonna skip the special town meeting for a moment, so we can get to the other stuff. Cultural council survey, the council needs to send out a survey every three years for, as part of getting grant eligibility. Since we're going to, it's, timing works if I can send this along with the town meeting warrant for the town meeting.
Yes.
So we'll save a postage and such, and that will work, so that we'll have the survey in, so the town remains eligible for the Massachusetts Cultural Council funding this fall.
Perfect. Can I tell you, I love this staple.
Yeah, I hit the wrong button.
No, no, I like that, because then you're not wasting product, and it staples itself.
And you don't have staples falling off the print, right?
I love that. I'm gonna try this, though. Let's do the test. Oh, look how great that is.
Oh, come on.
All right, glad, Charlie.
Recycling fee for 2019. I'm recommending leaving the fee at $50, the same amount as in fiscal 18. Basically, we broke even during fiscal 18 in terms of revenue expenses. We might take a loss in fiscal 19 because of the changing markets, but it's not gonna be a severe enough loss to really impact the fund balance for the recycling enterprise fund. I've talked with Susan Jackson, Recycling Coordinator, Steve Hayward, Highway Surveyor, and Sandy Nolan, Town Council. They concur.
Okay.
I will have Steve and Susan come in sometime, probably in September, because there are long-term issues about trash collection and trash disposal and recycling that we have to deal with. It's not, unfortunately, these days, it's not just a local issue, it even goes international. So, but, none of that should affect it this way. The fee stays the same, the bills can go out early enough so that we won't have it. One bill immediately right after another, there'll be a gap between the recycling bill and the property tax bill. So if the board, I told all three of them, you know, my plan to come to you all tonight, they were fine, they didn't see the need for another meeting with you about this particular thing.
Okay.
So are you looking to set the fee tonight?
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Cemetery D, there is one D to sign. See if I can get to that.
There it is. Thank you.
You're welcome. Regional grant for a fire department, there's Bridgewater East, Bridgewater, Halifax, Hanson, and Rainham have been awarded a $66,000 regional grant for firefighter wellness and fitness. Bridgewater is the host community. The fire department's gonna have to put up a small match, because the other towns will also, but the chief said he'll be able to get that out of the regular Halifax fire budget without having to come back for additional funds. There's a little information about the grant here. The board wants it, but congratulations to the group of towns getting that award. Thompson Street Road construction, a passing lane. As you will know, the Thompson Street work is being done right now by the Highway Department. William Balfour had wrote to the board and the Highway Surveyor asking that the passing, basically, there's a section of Thompson Street where the yellow lines are shown as a passing area. And he'd like that eliminated, he thinks it's a danger, there are several blind driveways in the area, some curves and such, and, because, so he'd like it eliminated, basically, it'd be double lined throughout that area.
Traffic study, yeah.
Has there been any incidents or anything?
I don't know.
That validates what he's, what he's saying?
He says that there have been accidents. I have, did not, since, I only saw this yesterday, I didn't have enough time to check with the police department.
Are you the gentleman in question?
I'm here on behalf of Mr. Balfour.
Oh, okay.
I'm Phil Junior.
You actually look like Billy.
Thank you. It's a very dangerous section of the road. My folks have been there for 50 years, I grew up in this area, and over the years, as well as recently, there have been a number of accidents on both ends on the stretch of either end of the corner. There have been deaths on, on both ends over various periods of time. My, my brother, although it was some time ago, and he was pulling into the driveway, and he was, he was hit by someone trying to pass him. And again, that was quite some time ago, but it, it doesn't diminish the current immediacy of the situation. I visit my parents several times, we work out in Bridgewater, and, and I experience it, my parents experience it. My sister lives in the other house next door, and both, both the driveways are blind driveways when you're coming from Halifax, heading towards Middleborough. In addition to that, and I attached some pictures to, to the drawing room, but, but there's one picture that I didn't, didn't attach, that I could pass this along to you. This is, this is a picture of an automobile coming from Middleborough, heading down towards Halifax Route 106. The picture, the corner is corner of Thompson Street and Walmwood Street. If you take a look at, at the, the broken lines and the two solid lines, give you a pretty good idea, and it's like this on the other end where Summit Street is as well, you can pass pretty, pretty close to that corner, and, and those two corners are very, very dangerous.
Yes.
And there are, there are a number of accidents that occurred.
Yes, right here.
Yeah.
This is, I would say that this is the biggest example, because of the, right here, you've got the curve.
Double line.
Yeah, where near Summit, I think, is even more dangerous.
Oh, absolutely. And if you, if you drive the road from, from Middleborough Halifax line all the way to 106, that is the only section of 105 on Thompson Street that has divided by.
The bright light.
And I suspect it goes back decades when we first moved there.
Can we keep this one?
When, yes, you can. When, when my parents moved there, it was in 1972. There was one house from the corner which is still there, the Woodhouse. My parents built the, the race ranch and set spec up the road, and there was one house down at Summit Street. And today, traffic is very heavy, the volume of trucks that run through, a lot of development that's taken, has taken place over the last 10, 15 years, and continues to be developed. So we're, we're asking you to, to give strong consideration to having a double line painted there. And the immediacy is, as I mentioned in the letter, is that construction is currently underway. I don't know the timeframe, I was actually, I drove to my parents yesterday, and some construction guys out there, patching what they had torn up over, I guess, several days before, and I asked them when the construction was gonna start, and he said they're gonna start paving today. Well, nothing.
Well, in fact, they went, they got down to work.
Sure, sure. So, so, but respectfully request, if you consider that.
He doesn't look that good.
So I was gonna, so typically, we would run something like this by our traffic study or our police unit, but I think that, I mean, it's pretty obvious, but...
Well, what I would do is recommend that the board approve it with two stipulations. One, that I check with the Highway Surveyor. If Steve has some reservations, I can certainly bring it back to the board.
Okay.
And ask him not to put in the lines and anything until we get this worked out.
Okay.
The other thing is to make sure, I, I want to make sure with Mass Highway, speed limit signs and such, and the stop signs, I know exactly what the process is. It's the first time anybody's had a discussion about passing lanes and such. So I want to make sure with Mass Highway, not because it's a state route, it's not a state road, we own the road, so the board has jurisdiction in the Highway Surveyor, but to make sure, do we have to get permission from the state or wherever it is?
Sure.
Find out the process, but otherwise, the board could approve it.
Okay.
The, the other thing is, if you, if you go around pretty much the entire area down that way, every street that has a longer section of road, far fewer houses, they're all double lines.
Okay. All right, awesome. I'm sure, I'm sure it'll be fine.
Thank you for coming in.
I'm sure it'll be fine, and as Charlie said, he'll just do his due diligence to make sure that we're legally doing the right thing.
The board could put that down.
So we'll make a motion, so do I have a motion that we make a double line?
Investigate the prospect of legal double lines.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna actually...
So that if, for instance, if he's gonna be doing the line here in the next three weeks, then Steve would already have the, go ahead.
Yeah, so I would say that the motion would be to approve the double lines with the stipulation that Charlie ensure that there is not any legal ramifications from that through the state.
And that Steve, and make sure that Steve, if Steve does have reservations, to bring that back to the board.
Yeah.
So do I have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being so thorough with the photos, that really helped.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks for coming in, too. Okay, so, oh, yeah, so that wasn't our appointment. Okay, so we have a 7:45.
Right. Welcome.
Davis Automotive.
Davis Automotive. Stephanie came in, paid $3,000 to the treasure collector, and recommending that the hearing be continued until, I believe, it's two months from now in September.
Two months?
Yeah. I'm doing, it's the same as I'm dealing with Twin Lakes Beer and Wine, or actually, Packard Store now, Liquor Store.
Okay, so that you're looking at probably...
The second meeting in, I think it's like the 25th?
So you're looking at the, yeah, the 25th, actually, Charlie, you're right.
September 25?
Yeah, September 25. Okay, so do I have a motion that we...
And that'll be for 7:45.
For 7:45.
I would need that we continue the hearing on Davis's until September 25 at 7:30?
7:45.
7:45.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Right.
Okay, Charlie.
Pam, Judy Rakutis is interested, serving on, oh, Kelly, I guess this just came in today.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yes.
Oh, yes, right, okay. Well, it's dated today, for whatever reason, but, so we can make it a point for her to come in on August 14, then? Whether, whatever the selectmen's being, I think it's the 20, 13th in this case, I think.
Perfect.
On the August 14.
14.
Awesome. Thank you.
So I guess...
Yeah, for 8 o'clock.
What's her name again? I'm sorry.
Her name is Judy's Rausfeldt, R-A-K-U-T-I-S.
R-A-K.
K-U-T-I-S, Rakutis.
Oak Colony Planning Council, is that her?
Yes.
No, it's Oak Colony Elder Services.
Elder Service.
Yeah, the Board of Directors.
Who is it, mine?
Yeah. Nice.
Okay.
We got that done. Church, Congressional Churches would like to use the Town Hall Green on September 8 from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for its annual barbecue and harvest festival. There are no conflicts, and there have been no problems of...
So moved.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just had to wake me up, that's all.
All right.
Just reminder, your site plan review for the liquor store, Solar Array, comments or requests by July 25. The planning board meeting is on August 3rd?
Yeah, that's what it said.
Yeah, well, it says, it's on the notice.
But August 3rd is a Thursday.
It's a Friday, isn't it?
Yeah, no, August 3rd is a Thursday. I know that for sure. Yeah, I got my calendar right now.
Well, Wednesday is the 1st.
Yeah.
No, August 3rd, only because I...
No, because the 10th is a Friday, so...
Oh, you're right, August 2nd.
August 3rd.
I'll notify...
I stand corrected. I don't even know the date.
Unless they're, unless they're having a meeting on Friday, which is, there's nothing going on with that. No, that's not gonna happen.
I will contact Terry and make sure that she's aware of the error in the notice. I'm hoping that doesn't foul things up for them. You've already dealt with the, second use of the Town Hall Green for Hops.
Yes.
Yard sale. Just so the board's aware, Highway Department did apply for a grant for the state for repairs to the High Street Bridge.
Oh, great.
Hopefully, that comes through.
We did receive a lawsuit against the town by Plymouth Rock and Ronald Tossing for damage to Mr. Tossing's vehicle back a year ago in July. It's been sent to Maya and to Town Council. Maya will handle this. There's no action for the board to take on that. Just for the board's notice, Dylan Riley, firefighter for the Fire Department, returned to full duty starting earlier, it was the 19th last week.
Yeah, it was awesome to see him today.
Personnel contracts, I have copies of, of course, as usual, the patrol office has only sent one, but we'll keep that in. So if the board could sign that, and then there's two copies of the one for the Fire Chief. Sign both of those, please, everybody. I'm still waiting for Chief Brogdon to sign this, and I'll try and get him to get it in by the 14. Let's see, we're through operations for Thompson Street. I haven't received any complaints during the last two weeks, but I also haven't received an application either. I'm not sure what the board would like to do on that. Do you want me to send another note to Mr. Peck, reminding of his obligation, or...
Yes, well, I want to have him come in.
Okay.
At this point. I mean, that's just me speaking. Tom, do you have an opinion? Especially because we're not having...
Okay, well, invite him in on 14.
Yep, perfect.
Those are the signature pages.
On the back.
I did get a complaint about leftover furniture and such on front of 105 Circuit Street. I'm gonna follow that up.
Okay.
If there's a problem, I'll notify the landlord of their property owner. Also, Halifax Trails, my plan is to, I already, I sent a note out a couple weeks ago to the owner. I haven't received any response as far as the cost, so there...
I thought it was gonna be beautiful.
Sent a certified letter.
Tom didn't get that.
Were we updated? Were we updated?
Tom didn't get that.
What's that?
I thought Halifax Trails was gonna be beautiful.
That'd be good.
674 Plymouth Street with the trailer, I believe that the, either the owner of the property or the occupant did submit a 60-day application with the building inspector, I'm gonna check on that tomorrow. I know we have not received any sort of extension application here, correct?
Oh, I understand this one now, okay.
We haven't received an application for any extension, okay. Still waiting for the police chief of the union contracts, both street property haven't been able to do anything with. Council on Aging, Pope's Tavern project, this reminder is a bid conference tomorrow over at the Council on Aging, sub bids are due on August 1st, general contractor bids are due August 8th. Bid deadline for the police chief assessment centers this week on July 26th, and then on Friday, July 27th, we're having the online auction on a couple dozen pieces of equipment, at Circus Equipment, so this online auction, now, so scrambling that. That bid deadline is late in the day on the 27th, that's basically one item each minute has a different deadline, so people can still submit bids for that. For the underground and above ground gas tanks at the High Rate Garage, I just need to check with the planning board to see whether they've got, say, plan approval or where that stands.
Yeah, okay.
Fieldstone Farms, I still need to check on this, has the building permits there, Rob's been dealing with any number of other things, I'm sure, and hasn't been able to catch me up on that.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I know it's been two weeks, because...
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so it should be awesome.
Need to check with Rob on that. Question, hemp production came up a couple of weeks ago, I told the board I needed to look into, I talked with Town Council, or Land Use Council about that. It's allowed because it's an agricultural product, growing is allowed in the agricultural residential zone by right, there's all of the garcels are greater than two acres in the other zones because of the state's laws on agriculture. Processing manufacturing's allowed in the commercial district by special permit industrial district by right, depending on the size of the processing manufacturing business part, if they were doing both, doing growing and then manufacturing and processing, it might be allowed in the residential agricultural zone with the growing facility, but it'd be a judgment call, basically, would it be considered an accessory use or not? And until you actually had set up plans, you wouldn't be able to make that judgment, so Rob would have to determine that. Obviously, all uses are subject to safety and approval if structures are included instead of just growing the fields. Evergreen attacks payments, the next hearing, that's Twin Lakes Liquors, that next hearing is on the 28th.
Oh, okay, yes.
We talked about Davis Automotive tonight, that's done, so we're having that hearing the 25th. I need to check with the highway supervisor about the cost for the sidewalk, the cream berry driver seat, if I'm able to get an estimate from his engineering.
You just rocked that, Charlie.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted...
And you have one minute to spare, I'm very impressed by that.
Let me go out and get some ice cream.
Okay, one minute to spare, wow.
Well, we still need to talk about our meeting, but we'll do that after we see these five gentlemen.
Okay. Yeah, hello.
Do you want to?
We have one minute.
We have one minute, okay.
Do we have to...
Well, the socks are at 1-0 after 1.
Okay.
That's important.
Yeah, so do the road opening.
As usual, it's two days.
Oh, road opening, I'll do it.
Who's pitching today?
Sorry, I'll do it.
Porcello, I thought.
No, Porcello was last night.
I like doing the road opening.
Then Pomeroy, I see.
Yeah, me too.
Let's see.
I'm quite efficient at it.
No promises on him.
All right, let me get it. All right, people, we have a road opening.
I gave you a copy.
Yes, so this is for Columbia Gas, to make a four-by-six road cut tie into a four-by-15 road cut trench at 374 Plymouth Street to install a gas service. You've got the building inspector all set, the police detail, one detail office, the highway surveyor is okay, water's okay, conservation's okay, we're all okay, we just need to, okay.
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 Okay, so, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ooh.
Second.
Okay.
You guys sound very nice together, can I say?
Twin 1, Twin 2, what can you say?
Acapello.
That was very nicely done.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, so now we have an 8 o'clock appointment. Oh, okay.
They can do two things at once.
Because we had to wait until the exact time, so...
Just in case somebody else wanted to do it.
Yeah, so we have Jake Sullivan and Justin McClair here, and they are for a Class 2 license, and the location is at 413...
Which is which?
Plymouth Street.
Justin, Jake.
So J and J.
Yeah. 413 is the old Hollywood Classics site, I'm just speaking for a TV audience here, so people know their work.
I saw people all over.
Okay, and so we have...
Older kids.
Yes. So, why don't you tell us a little bit about your business?
Yes, so we are looking to do a 24-car license, we're looking to retail cars anywhere from the, like, three to like $10,000 range, nothing too crazy, we're looking for 12 inside, 12 outside, so nothing is overcrowded, and just looking to honestly make it a clean business, nothing too crowded, everything that, want to make it look nice and be organized.
Where were your employees parked?
What was that?
Where were your employees parked? Where were you and your staff parked?
Oh, we, yeah, we had a plan, a revised plan for that, and we have five parking spaces, including a handicap for employees as well as customers, and we're doing biappointment only, so there really won't be any more than one to two cars for customers in general, anyway.
Okay, so this is strictly car sales, so there will not be any repairs, manufacturing of any kind, auto body repairs, so fabrication, packaging, welding, anything outside of ordinary car sales that may affect a different zoning determination, I had to get that up.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So there's no detailing or anything?
No, none of that, no, absolutely not.
It is a small site, and it gets real crowded real quick.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and you know that you're immediately up against the weapons, which is another issue.
Absolutely. Anything detailing related or anything like that was subcontracted out to a different location, so nothing is gonna be announced.
I'm not too crazy about the two containers on Indian Path Road, I think they're kind of...
Well, you could talk to these gentlemen.
Yeah, we actually contacted the people, because we were aware that they weren't picking it up or anything like that, and due to us calling, we're giving them a trial run to clean, like, make sure that they pick it up, there's no, like, trash, because it's for donations.
Yeah, collecting.
Yeah, they weren't collecting it, they would do it one month, two months, exactly.
And people get rid of their household items.
Exactly, exactly, it gets all left, and we don't want that, because it'll damage our business in general and not make it look nice, because we are doing landscaping as well as...
Exactly.
Unless you're gonna have a used furniture place there, too.
Exactly, exactly. So we are doing a trial run with them for a month, month and a half, if things don't change, immediately get rid of it, because we obviously don't want to take away the donations from them, but we also don't want our places looking...
And I know the sidewalk's immediately in front of that, right?
Um, I'm not too positive.
Yeah, the sidewalk is right there next to the two containers.
Because my first concern was whether it was on our town or not, and...
No, it's on the property.
I'm pretty sure it's on the property.
Like I said, that was the day before we even, even did that, we just, we actually didn't even think about anything, and then I came up at the last meeting, I believe on the 19th, and we called right away and told them, it was something like, month and a half, figure stuff out, if it doesn't get picked up, we want to help.
And I just noticed there is a note from the secretary to the DBA saying that you would need a special permit, and they expect...
Terry said that's all set.
Oh, it is all set?
It is all set, sorry, Terry, she said it was, but I will double check with our app, because they're not leaving until...
The 13th of August.
But I'll make sure that everything's all set before I get them their license.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, I believe the other thing we have to do is for a signage as well, go get approved for that here as well.
Yep, perfect. All right, does anybody have any other questions?
The only stipulation, I know you're gonna keep a clean property, but you have to have that on...
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's gonna be maintained weekly or biweekly, depending on what it is, we're mulching the front of it, because all the moss is absolutely destroyed, putting a new mailbox out, making the sign look nice and clean, nothing too crazy, but other than that's gonna be well maintained.
Is this your first venture, have you had...
No, this is the first time, yeah, me and him, so...
It'll be good.
Yeah, it'll be good.
Wish you well.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Managing the site's everything there, because it's so tight.
Yeah, and eventually, we might put awnings up in front of the building to give it a little bit of edge, because it is kind of a...
Make sure you get permission.
Yeah, it's a pretty plain building, so...
Talk to the building inspector, because we have strict requirements.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
As you know, Southern Cars is located, located...
Exactly.
And the name of your company is?
J and J Motorsports.
J and J?
J and J.
Oh, J and J, very nice.
Yeah, J and Justin.
That's very nice.
Jake or Jacob.
Well, you're not gonna argue about who's J is first, it just be...
Yeah.
My first one comes in the alphabet, right.
We'll make it alphabetical. Justin goes first, yeah. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the Class 2 license for J and J Auto.
Move that.
With the stipulation that the property stays, be maintained to the standards that we would like, and also...
And they serve pizza, we each carry it yourself.
And I also...
That's across the street, right there.
I also want included in the motion that, that no car repairs, manufacturing of any kind, auto body repair, fabrication, packaging, welding, or any, anything outside of ordinary car sales, so that wording is on from the building inspector.
Idea that you have right now, this is what you want?
Yes, 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 please.
That doesn't mean you can't ultimately go get a special permit for some of that.
No, yeah, absolutely.
But right now, this is...
Yeah, no, we...
I mean, if you gotta change the flat, I'm like, oh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that way, yeah.
With their reason.
Okay, perfect, all right, that's...
Second.
I'll include that in the motion.
Okay, so Tom's gonna move it, Troy is seconding it, and I'm gonna say, all those in favor?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Good luck, really.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Appreciate it.
Really nice to see young people fulfilling a dream.
All right.
Go get 'em!
They both look like basketball players.
Isn't that nice, they're so young.
So, town meeting.
So awesome.
They have one schedule for August 20th, today was the deadline for submission of articles, as far as I know.
Today what?
Oh, yeah, let me, if you, the board with permit, give me a half minute, because I want to check the special town meeting folder.
No, okay.
To make sure I'm not missing anything, for listeners there on the first page.
Right here.
Did you have a question?
No, I said they're like, they're gonna do that, yeah, it's, it's cool.
It's awesome.
But you got, if you guys, there's two, there's two licenses...
Don't tell us what to do!
I have to tell you.
That's mushy, yeah.
So this sign there, two, I'm just explaining that there's two applications that they fill out.
All right, you're the best.
So just, and I'll fill in the date and all that, and just, I said they would check on a couple of different things, I think they...
Blossom!
Yeah, well, I have to be, I don't have anything to law, how do you guys find me? Right?
We don't have that authority.
We are gonna make an office downstairs, though.
Yeah, we could seclude you away from the populace.
Um, what was I gonna say? Yeah, they still, they still need, like, business certificate and all that from the town clerk and...
Yeah, this stuff that's...
Yeah, so there's still a couple of little things that, but that's, they're good.
So, the articles that I have, including ones that are in the folder, are the following. Warrant is the Council on Aging project, we won't have a figure for that until after we go to press, because we won't have bids until after we go to press. Warrant needs to be posted before August 6th, and it won't be in today, we won't have a decision probably for a few days after that, until what we want to be spending on the project. There's the ambulance billing, the chief talked with you all about that at the last meeting, with the changeover from doing it inside the fire department to using an outside firm, but with the hope that we're going to be receiving a large increase in revenue due to that, but to add $27,000 to the ambulance billing account for fiscal 19, to cover the additional expense of the contractor. Relocation of the computer room equipment from the first floor to the basement, that would be, unless I get an estimate in the next couple of days, that will be one without an amount, but we'll either be able to pass over this at town meeting, or if we have enough of plans, without an amount. Regional dispatch, there had been confusion at my end back during this winter, I had queried the regional dispatch and said, is the assessment going to be the same as it was the year we just finished, and they said, yes.
And they were that?
Well, no, the problem was, is I took that as the net rather than the gross, and what happened was that we had a difference between our gross assessment and then our net, because all the communities that split up a grant to reduce their assessments, so the actual assessments, the gross assessment is the same, 150, I only had 135 in the line I'm, because the net assessment was 126 for fiscal 18. So what I'm proposing is putting 20,000 more in there, it covers, gets us up to 150, I'm putting another 5,000 in there in case there are any items that we have to purchase for the communications from our police station down to Duck's, there's been sporadic needs of additional equipment and such, and I don't want to have to, on the first penny, go to the finance committee and ask for a reserve fund transfer. We talked a few weeks ago at the Traffic Safety Committee about doing a townwide speed limit, because the 25 miles per hour speed limit that we've talked about for densely, thickly settled areas. According to police chief, there's very few places in town that that would qualify, including the ones that we've tried to do that for. However, the problem with, it's an equal problem for 30, but we have a number of streets where we want a 30 mile an hour speed limit. We could institute by special legislation a 30 mile an hour speed limit, but then if there were streets, like the ones that are already posted, that we think a higher speed limit is advisable, we can post that there, so that, in essence, you'll see the signs in other communities, that, I'm paraphrasing, 30 mile an hour speed limit throughout Ripton, unless otherwise posted. And we will be doing the same thing here, Brockton, for instance, I think, has a citywide speed limit. That would, it doesn't mean that we can't then put up 30 mile an hour speed limits in other locations, once we do a townwide one, because I know that residents will say, well, they don't know it's a 30 miles an hour, yeah, I was over at the town line, but they don't know it from my street, so we would still need, we probably still get requests for the 30 miles, but it would be legal for us to establish that, rather than worrying about thickly settled.
But we can, we can raise it on the streets we care to raise it.
Yes.
Like 106 and some sections.
Right, or Elm Street, or Thompson Street, or elsewhere.
Because what would happen is everybody would violate it, and then we'd be in this, you know, I know it generates revenue, but all it does is generate a lot of discontent. It's usually the residents who get in on it.
And it doesn't always give us a lot of revenue, because we have to, you know, there has to be an officer.
Yeah, right, have to, right, if somebody appeals it.
Right.
We, the billing committee has mentioned to, or the staff, Scott Mitterer had mentioned, the ramp at the entrance here on the parking lot side of Town Hall is falling apart, and it's a safety problem, and it's also an ADA problem, in that sense, we have to have a good access, legal access into the building.
I thought they just worked on that ramp.
They were going to, and they were assessing it to look at the...
We thought it was just the handrail.
Yeah, and they realized.
I knew they would do some work on it, I'm sure.
Yeah.
It's been worked on a little on and off over the years.
Sure, he's done some stuff.
But today they had somebody looking at it specifically.
So, we'll get, if Scott has an estimate by the time we go to press, I know he was talking about like 10 or 15,000.
15, at least.
Yeah, because we were talking that maybe the better way to go would be to pour concrete and make it more permanent.
So that would be another article, I know this sounds weird, Uber and Lyft and companies like that, the state charges a fee per trip. The state then distributes half the money that's generated that to the cities and towns, depending on where the trip occurred.
Really?
Yes. Mind you, 90% of the money is Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, et cetera, Newton, Brooklyn.
That's where we are.
Well, not just, yeah, not just large, but I mean, Springfield doesn't get as much money, for instance, as Brooklight, it's more where, there are cars, where more people don't have vehicles. We get, I think, like $100 or $200 or some small, we're not Alfred, Alfred got, I think, 50 cents or something like that. But for whatever reason, when the legislature set this up, they set up a very specific way of distributing the money and the town spending the money. Supposedly, we're supposed to use this to help cover the cost of having these companies operating your community. Right. Which basically means to me that I tell, I tell Steve, Steve, just spend the 300 bucks on Thompson Street.
Yeah, right, to help him on that route, yeah.
I think I disagree with them charging somebody, because they probably have to already pay a tax for their business.
Well, all I can tell you is that there's a...
All right, I mean, it's...
It's probably in the fee.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if it's already law, we'll take it.
Yeah, well, that's the point. So, and the mechanism includes having to go to town meeting for official appropriation of the money for...
To allocate the money.
Right, because it's not a general fund expenditure.
Oh, okay.
It's reserved for this particular appropriation, but it has to be appropriated at town meeting.
Hey, I have an idea going forward, Charlie. Why don't we let that go, we can couple whatever income we have every town meeting toward Chapter 9, like, toward roads and...
We can, but it's gonna be a weird situation in that, I don't, the timing of the check and then the timing of the...
Oh, the reimbursement.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, because it would put it towards town road.
And when we have to spend it, so for instance, we're supposed to spend this money by December 31st.
Oh.
Right.
So you need to do it at the same...
Yes.
But we can make a road, we, we could bet by signs with it.
We could do that, though, I don't think you can, these days, get $300, it doesn't get you much of a sign.
It doesn't get you much of a piece of ass stripes on the road.
Right, well, what, but whatever...
It's going towards something related.
So I'm gonna, you know, I'd be, basically, hitting it, I'd have the town meeting, hand it over to Steve.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying, going with that, our town road article could be $149,800.
I'll, I'll see what I can do for future ones.
Just helps with the capital.
Um, weights and measures, um, in between March and now, David Moore, is it, I think?
Yeah.
Had proposed a new set of, um, schedule for weights and measures. He doesn't, he didn't need it at that moment, because he had done most of the work already, but since we're going to have a town meeting, I'm willing to bring in the new schedule for approval at town meeting, because it's part of our bylaws.
Perfect.
Dispatch COA, ambulance filling out, survey, and with that, we're handling the Uber stuff. Um, okay, um, Sandy had an article in, we need to, we have an additional amount that we need to, um, give to Area 58, in essence, we took in more money.
I was just saying, why do we owe them more?
We could, because all the dollars that we get are supposed to go to them, and when we appropriated last for fiscal 18, we appropriated less money than we ended up having come in.
John gets very spirited about this subject.
Yeah, I, I, I want to follow through with meeting with the cable committee and Area 58 people. I, I, it's not that I'm anti any of this, because I think it serves a purpose, but I think the whole thing is cloaked in such a way that people don't understand what they're paying for, because it comes out of everybody's cable bill. And Comcast, which is very good at suffrage, has got that thing set up in such a way that you'd never understand what it was for. And, and I'm, I'm fine with it, as long as everybody knows what they're paying for, and if they want it.
Well, I will schedule a meeting with them either for August or September.
And then that includes salaries of the execs and all of that, and what started the whole thing was when they presented these giveaways.
Giveaways.
Yeah, which we all refused, um, which I thought was inappropriate, but anyway, that, that's why I'm sort of raised my...
I think I should.
Bar special, maybe.
They got enough to buy those, no. Give me start.
Yeah, what are they spending money on, I don't see their budget.
Do you have a pen in the pocket?
Okay, and that would be it. So those are the things I mentioned. What I would like, however, if the board would approve those items to be placed on the, you know, town meeting warrant, what I'm also recommending is the board give authorization to the chair during the next two days, if something comes up that she has jurisdiction to, in fact, add anything else.
In other words, we should trust her.
Yes, you should.
Okay.
So, because this is the only meeting we're having about this, um, and I know, if we forgot something today, for some reason, I don't want to have to, oh, another meeting.
So you're gonna approve the items that Charlie has listed on the special town meeting, and also...
Any additional articles.
Authorize the chair.
To, to approve any additional things that she deems necessary.
Yeah, we're gonna have to watch that.
Do I, who's gonna move that?
Just stay out of the back room.
I'll move that.
Do you want a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right. Yeah, I'm not going up to boss.
I double eye the part that I may be in charge of something, because I'm not.
Um, other than that, I do, we do need an executive session to discuss the police chief's contract, the fire chief's contract, I guess, and the town ministries' contract. Also, um, I need to go with the board to discuss litigation, specifically Halifax versus Bergstrom, um, for an update on that, and then also Andrews versus Halifax for an update on that, um, in that discussion of these items would be detrimental, um, to the town in public session.
So I have a motion to go into executive session, not to return, except to adjourn.
So moved.
Um, Tom?
Second.
Tom? Yes?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Cam, yes? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Make sure you come to the yard sale on August 12th.
Yep, and good night, Mrs. Calabash, wherever you are.
I feel like I asked him if we can talk.